The Baltimore City Council now called the order, please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. The night's invocation will be led by Pastor Sean Bell of the Greater Paradise Christian Center. If everyone would please stand for their invocation and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this council and we thank you for this city called Baltimore. We ask now that you would give wisdom and insight to the meeting and to the business at hand. We thank you today for your wisdom and your love. It is for these things we pray, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you Pastor Bell for the invocation. The court will call the role of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening's showcase, we welcome Mr. Darius Graham and Mr. Daniel Getzel.
Yeah, close enough.
Of the Johns Hopkins Social Innovation Lab.
Thank you so much. My name is Daniel Getzel. I'm the Director of Innovation Initiatives at Johns Hopkins University. I want to start with a statistic. Over the past five years, companies based on Hopkins' intellectual property have raised 1.2 billion dollars. The sad fact is, only 15% of those companies now remain in Baltimore. We've seen companies sell for $300 million to Bristol Myers Squibb. That company is now based in Raleigh, North Carolina. We have a company that is about to go public this year in IPO. They are now based in Boston. So the mandate of our group at Johns Hopkins Technology Ventures in the Social Innovation Lab is to change that statistic. So we have a dual goal of commercializing life-changing technologies that are coming out of our dorm rooms and labs, and we also have an economic development mandate. We are working very, very hard to start and retain startups in the city of Baltimore. We're having some great success. We've opened up two innovation hubs on campus. One on the medical school campus, one on the student Homewood campus. And we're also looking to develop a student entrepreneurship hub that Darius is going to be talking a little bit more about in addition to our Social Innovation Lab efforts. We spun out 20 companies last year, which was the largest number that Johns Hopkins has ever spun out in a single year, and we're seeing a 50% retention rate, which is much higher than the 15% that we were even seeing two or three years ago. So these are success stories. We're seeing more and more companies starting and growing here in Baltimore, including a company like Factory Four, which, you know, raised 1.75 million dollars, has 20 employees right in downtown Baltimore, and they're an advanced manufacturing company started by two Hopkins graduates. And they came out of the Social Innovation Lab, which Darius is going to talk a little bit more about.
Good evening. I'm Darius Graham, and I have the pleasure of leading several of our entrepreneurship and innovation initiatives at Hopkins. Tonight, I want to tell you briefly just about Social Innovation Lab. It's a program that finds people that has great creative ideas for addressing issues here in the city. So each fall, we have an open application process where anyone in the city of Baltimore, so whether you're a student at Hopkins or someone living in a neighborhood not affiliated with university, you can apply with your idea for a way to address an issue here in the city. We got about 84 applicants this fall, selected 10. We worked with them over six months, giving them seed funding, mentorship, office space, and other forms of support. And we helped them move their ventures forward and make a real impact, whether that's here in the city or somewhere else in the world. And I want to share just three of their stories with you. So Brittany Young is a young woman who grew up in West Baltimore. She wanted to become an engineer. She was told that she couldn't because of where she came from, what she looked like. She ended up becoming an engineer at NASA and created a program called B360 Baltimore that takes young people who are engaged in dirt bike culture and helps them engage in STEM education and training programs. Brittany went through our Social Innovation Lab with just an idea, and we've helped her expand her impact in a major way. We also work with two of our students, Shrinik and Ravi, who had witnessed mental health issues in their lives and really wanted to find a way to help people get access to mental health care. So they created an app called Sunrise Health, which is anonymous online group therapy that is being deployed in police departments, fire departments, at universities, within veterans groups, to help people in really high-stress environments get access to mental health care. And then finally, Chantel Roberts is one of our great success stories. She came to us as someone who suffered the loss of a child due to sudden infant death syndrome, and she wanted to make sure other families didn't have to deal with that loss. So she created a program called the Portable Alternative crib that provides safe sleep, education, training, and products to help families in Baltimore and throughout Maryland get the support they need to ensure safe sleep for their kids. She came to us with just an idea about a year and a half ago, and with the support of Social Innovation Labs, some of our mentors and others, she was able to develop that idea into a viable venture and has now quit her job to work full-time, expanding her business.
So the reason we're here today is because we're launching the Social Innovation Policy Mentor Network, because we realized it's really hard when you're starting a business to navigate government and the bureaucracy involved. So we're reaching out to different government agencies, elected officials, people in the mayor's office and the governor's office to opt in to be mentors and agree to meet with our startups, take their phone calls, help them understand the regulatory path, help them understand where pilates might be available, and really help them get off the ground and keep them in Baltimore, because that's the goal here. And if they have strong relationships in the city, they're much more likely to stay. So we sent, we handed out some information on that, and if you'd be interested in getting involved or have anyone within your office who'd be a good fit for it, we'd love to be in touch. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's give them a hand. That's some good stuff there. Thank you guys, we really appreciate it. Wow. It is the Council of Council Generalize the Inification Act for motion of generalized prayer. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of generalizing the invocation, say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. We now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general of the proceedings from December 4th. City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
The motion approved the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently the journalists adopting executive nominations.
EA-17-0111 Rebecca Baker, Member Sustainability Commission, District 1.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0112 Donzell Brown, Member Sustainability Commission, District 13.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0113 Lisa Ferretto, Member Sustainability Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0114 the Honorable Robin Lewis, Member Sustainability Commission, District 1.
This has been, this has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0115 Barbara McMahon, Member Sustainability Commission, District 11.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0116 Gregory Sawtelle, Member Sustainability Commission, District 10.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0117 Thomas J. Stosser, Member Sustainability Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0118 Tracy L. C. Williams, Jr., Member Sustainability Commission, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee.
EA-17-0119 Ben Sechick, Member Sustainability Commission.
This has been assigned to the Executive Reportments Committee. Our bills should be introduced.
City Council Bill 17-0171 Five and Dime Historic District, for the purpose of designating the area located within certain boundaries as the Five and Dime District, Dime Historic District, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
Oh, this has been signed to Housing and Urban Affairs. I thought this was one of his bills. Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0172 Howard Street Commercial Historic District, for the purpose of designating the area located within certain boundaries as the Howard Street Commercial Historic District, sponsor City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0173 Recordation and Transfer Taxes Increases Dedicating Portion of Tax Proceeds for the purpose of raising the recordation tax from $5 to $6 for each $500 or fractional part of $500 of the actual consideration paid, raising the transfer tax from 1.5% to 1.34% of the taxable base as defined, dedicating a portion of the proceeds from these taxes to the Continuing Non-Lapsing Fund created by City Charter, Article 1, Section 14 Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and generally relating to the city's recordation and transfer taxes. Sponsors: Henry, President Young, Middleton, Bullock, Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark, Sneed, Pinkett, Stokes.
Chair recognize, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, thank you to all my co-sponsors. And thank you once again to the council's audiovisual staff for the wonderful wiring job we have for our microphones. This legislation is a reprise of legislation introduced in the waning days of the last term. It came out of conversations from last year's inclusionary and affordable housing conversation as the best way to fund affordable housing at any type of scale. It would require a modest increase to the existing recordation and transfer tax, and by modest, I mean a couple hundred dollars on the closing of the average, you know, an average-sized home in Baltimore City for people who usually, most people don't buy or sell more than two or three homes in the course of their lifetime. The bulk of the proceeds would come from lots of little transactions like that, and there would be some regular contributions into it from people who are developing real estate and making money off of the buying and selling of properties, and that's a good way to fund your affordable housing. This modest increase will net us what looks like something in the range of $10 million a year, which would be enough to leverage the creation of thousands, the creation, maintenance, or preservation of thousands of affordable units, and it would be sustainable. And the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would be in a position to come up with the most creative ways to subdivide that pot. So again, Mr. President and colleagues, thank you for the co-sponsorship, and I look forward to seeing this legislation move forward in concert with the task force that you're going to be talking about shortly, which is going to also be looking into the specific ways in which we should be focusing on affordable housing. Thank you.
Councilman, you do want a hearing before that on this bill, correct?
Sure.
Okay. This has been assigned to the Taxation Finance Economic Development Committee. Chair recognize, Councilman Scott. Oh, I didn't see that one. I don't know what's going on today. Resolution introduce.
City Council Resolution 17-0057R Community Development TIFs. For the purpose of urging the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Baltimore Development Corporation and the Department of Finance to work with the City Council to develop a community development-focused TIF process to assist Baltimore's disadvantaged neighborhoods in their efforts to unlock their full potential. Sponsors: Henry, President Young, Middleton, Scott, Bullock, Dorsey, Burnett, Sneed, Clark, Stokes, Pinkett.
Chair recognize, Councilman Henry. Please note that Councilman Cohen is a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, thank you to all of my co-sponsors. This resolution is one of the ideas coming out of the hearing we had earlier this fall on private development initiatives and private development incentives that the city provides. The idea behind it is that the same principle that we use to do TIFs for individual big development projects could be used for scattered site projects being done on a community development basis. And the example that I wanted to use is Habitat for Humanity. In my district, in the Woodburn McCabe neighborhood, Habitat for Humanity is redoing 20 houses in a relatively small area. If you look at all of Woodburn McCabe, I think you can make the very reasonable case that by redeveloping these 20 vacant blighted houses and bringing in, you know, strong homeowners who, as part of Habitat's own process, want to be active members of the community association and give back to the neighborhood and add to the civic capacity of the area, it's not unreasonable to say that you can raise the values of the surrounding homes in the neighborhood they're working. Even if just a modest increase of $10,000 for each house in Woodburn McCabe, if you raised the values of all those houses by that much, the tax increment that the city would capture would be something on the range of another $90,000 to $100,000 a year. That much money would support a TIF bond that started at a value of about $5 million. We could pay off that TIF bond over the next 30 years with the increment from the neighborhood's improvement. And that $5 million could go to Habitat to do the gap subsidy that they need to actually develop the chunk of houses that they're going to be doing in the first place. It's the same concept that we use, you know, anywhere else that we do a TIF. The idea, though, is that maybe it doesn't have to be one big development, and maybe it doesn't have to be that one big developer who is, you know, initiating it. Maybe the city could go out looking for projects like this. And that is the conversation, Mr. President, that this resolution calls for. It calls for housing and the BDC and finance to come back and sit down and talk with the council about how could we make something like this work? And so I would hope that the first part of that conversation would be the hearing on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can go back to 1701-73 and add Councilman Slyfer as a co-sponsor on that bill. Thank you. Alrighty.
City Council Resolution 17-0058R Task Force on Improving Baltimore City's Housing Programs. For the purpose of calling for the creation of a task force to propose revision to Baltimore City's housing programs, which will increase the supply, distribution, and quality of affordable housing across the city so that we can better meet the needs and demands of current and future residents. Sponsors: President Young, Bullock, Henry, Costello, Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Clark, Stokes, Pinkett, Sneed.
Please note that Councilman Slyfer is a co-sponsor. Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of us in Baltimore recognize, housing is a severe issue. We know that we have an inclusionary housing program, which has only produced several dozen units over the course of several years. We know that affordability is at a crisis point in our city. And so the purpose of this task force is to convene members of the advocacy community, midsize for-profit and nonprofit developers to come around the table to talk about what are the solutions to this problem? We want to make sure this is based upon data, looking at the market as it currently stands, and then coming up with some realistic policy solutions moving forward. And hopefully, this will be also included into legislation that'll be pushed forward. Given the urgency of this matter, I request that we suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently is suspended. Chair recognize Chairman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 17-0058R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
City Council Resolution 0059R Investigative Hearing Baltimore City Police Staffing, Recruitment, and Retention. For the purpose of requesting that the Baltimore City Police Commissioner appear before the City Council to brief it regarding recruitment efforts, officer retention, and recouping training dollars, report on the number of percentage of individuals that enroll in the police academy, graduate from the police academy, and are employed by the Baltimore Police Department after graduation, and discuss the retention rate of those employed by the Baltimore Police Department, the deployment of officers, and how that deployment will enable the city to curtail the rise in violent crimes. Sponsors: Scott, President Young, Bullock, Henry, Costello, Pinkett, Dorset, Burnett, Clark, Sneed, Stokes.
Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, as you know, earlier this year, we had a hearing on this very same issue. At your request, we were able to get some update, and we're looking forward to digging down into that data even further. And we will actually be announcing the hearing later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. You can find the Consent Council in Section A at the back of the agenda. There are motions to approve the Consent Council. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving the Consent Council, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently, this council is approved. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
President, I move.
You have to stand up.
Mr. President, I move short titles on second and third reader.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of short titles for the remainder of the hearing, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently. We'll now move to bills on second reader. Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0167 Supplementary Casinos Special Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Planning, $6.2 million.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank you for your steadfast support of the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership. As you know, you served on the board with I there, and we've been making great progress with getting money out to the community to make sure that that local impact aid is spent in a way that is in line with what the community's goals are. We held a hearing on this bill on Monday, December 4th. At this time, I move the bill favorably.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion approved the bill, move to third reader. Chair recognize Councilman, I mean Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 17-0167 to third reader at the same meeting.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of invoking Rule 12-1 to move City Council Bill 17-0167 to third read on the same meeting, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently. And Council Bill 17-0167 is on third reader. Third reader for, third reader requiring invocation of Rule 12-1 for same-day advancement.
City Council Bill 17-0167 Supplementary Casinos Special Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Planning, $6.2 million. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0037 City Streets Opening Eager Street in the 10-foot alley. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0038 City Streets Closing Eager Street in a 10-foot alley. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bills 17-0039 City Streets Closing Certain Streets and Alleyies Bound by North Bond Street, East North Avenue, Broadway, and East Lafayette Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0057 City Streets Closing Bed of Two 10-foot Alleyies Bound by East 20th Street, North Chester Street, East North Avenue, and North Castle Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0058 City Streets Closing A Portion of West 26th Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0124 City Streets Opening Portion of A 4-foot Alley Extending From West Eager Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0125 City Streets Closing 4-foot Alley Extending From West Eager Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0126 Sale Of Property Portion Of The Former Bed Of A 4-foot Alley Extending From West Eager Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0130 City Streets Closing Towanda Avenue And A Portion Of Suffolk Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0131 Sale Of Property Former Beds Of Towanda Avenue And A Portion Of Suffolk Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0132 City Streets Opening Water Street And Hollingsworth Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0133 City Streets Closing Water Street And Hollingsworth Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0138 City Streets Closing A 10-foot Alley Extending From The North Side Of Esther Place. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer.
Please note, Councilman Dorsey has a no.
Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0139 City Streets Closing North Arch Street, Vine Street, And Reiman Court. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0140 Sale Of Property Former Beds Of North Arch Street, Vine Street, And Reiman Court. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0141 Right Of Way Released For Municipal Utilities And Services Through The Former Bed Of Jordan Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0144 Discounted City Services And Equipment For Nonprofit Events. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Sneed, Clark, Stokes.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0145 City Streets Opening 8-foot Alley Extending From The East Side Of North Schroeder Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0146 City Streets Closing 8-foot Alley Extending From The East Side Of North Schroeder Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0147 City Streets Opening North Arch Street, A Portion Of Vine Street, A Portion Of Reiman Court. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 017-0148 Sale Of Property Former Beds Of Water Street And Hollingsworth Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0154 City Property Naming The Building Formerly Known As Miku Building To Be Councilman Harry S. Cummings Building. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0163 Children And Youth Fund Interim Governance And Administration. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 17-0166 York Road Retail Business District License Fees Reversion To Annual Collection. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Slyfer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January 10th, at 5:00 PM in council chambers. This will be televised for Council Bill 17-0040R Increase Transparency About Police Seized Property At The Request Of Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Chair recognize Chairman Stokes.
Mr. President, the Executive Reportments Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 3rd, 2018, beginning at 10:00 AM. Sustainability Commission Delegate Robin Lewis And Ben Zechick. Also, on January 17th, 2018, the Executive Reportments will hold a public hearing on Sustainability Commission. Rebecca Bake, Donzell Brown, Lisa Ferretto, Barbara McMahon, Gregory Sawtelle, Thomas Stosser, And Tracy Williams.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Mr. President, I rise to and move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Pinkett. All those in favor of suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion currently, you may announce your hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Public Safety Committee will have a hearing for Council Resolution 17-0059R this upcoming Tuesday, December 12th, at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. Baltimore City Police Staffing, Recruiting, And Retention. Mr. President, also, we're going to announce a rise in changing time in the hearing. The council committee was scheduled to have a hearing for Council Resolution 17-0047R at 4:00 PM, but we're now flip-flopping. 17-0047R will be at 4:30 PM, and that is the hearing for a calling for an expansive auxiliary police unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Committee announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I announced this on Monday evening, but apparently, there's a mistake in the agenda. The Biennial Audits Oversight Commission will hold the hearing on Thursday, December 21st, in chambers at 4:00 PM, not 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Okay, we're going to move to regular announcements. Chair recognize Chairman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to just solemnly request that Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark honor a moment of silence for the now 324 homicide victims in the city of Baltimore and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want her to also, you know, recognize the hundreds of people who are dying at the hands of the opioid crisis as well. Chair recognize, Councilman Henry, did not come on this side.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise to ask for a moment of silence for Bob Weiner, who was a business owner in my district, and he, I don't know whether, we do not know yet whether or not he will be added to the list of homicide victims. He was found dead yesterday. And he was a good guy and ran a good bar and was, as far as I was concerned, a positive force on the York Road corridor, and so I'd ask for a moment of silence for him. Thank you.
Chair recognize Councilman Slyfer. Chair recognize Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize our colleague over here, Councilman Chris Burnett, who tonight will be receiving the Local Legislator Award at the State's Attorney's Gala.
Before we go any further, we have a new daddy in the house. We want to congratulate our colleague Zeke Cohen on the birth of Maya Cohen. Congratulations, and welcome to daddyhood. And he happens to, you know, I hope he don't fall into the same footsteps that I fell into. I wanted a boy, and now I have two girls, and I wanted a grandson. Now I have three granddaughters. So I'm hoping that you can get a son in there some kind of way. Chair recognize Councilman Cohen. You have to stand, you have to stand up, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am extremely tired. I am hoping to get some sleep tonight. I have not slept in three days. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Chair recognize Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So back in July, this body passed the resolution to establish a human trafficking task force. So one, just wanted to thank you for your support. Today, we held the first task force meeting in partnership with Tom Stack from the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and other partners from the State's Attorney's Office, Police Department, advocates, survivors. I mean, we had over 40 representatives from organizations all over the city doing great work. This is a huge step in the right direction to eliminate trafficking in Baltimore City, and we will be meeting, we have a committee structure established now that'll be meeting every other month, and the entire collaborative will be meeting every other month. So every month, I'll be working on this issue to try and end trafficking in Baltimore City. So just wanted to thank all of you for your support and looking forward to continuing to work on this issue, and I'll have some bills brewing as well from the chairman of the Legislative Committee for the task force. But again, thank you very much, and I'd also like to ask for a moment of silence for all the victims of trafficking in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Chair recognize Chairman Costello.
Mr. President, I'd like to invite you and all our colleagues to the 46th Annual Monument Lighting this evening in Mount Vernon. I know that each of you have received an email today about a surprise guest who comes out of Baltimore, so hopefully you can join us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Hill.
Chair recognize, you need something, Councilwoman Clark?
Oh, no, I just want to get through to the guy.
He's a Baltimore native, and he's a great singer, and he will be performing tonight. Chair recognize Councilwoman, Chair recognize Councilwoman Clark, and you can have, you know, any announcement you want before you move forward. All right. Chair recognize Councilwoman
Mr. President, members of the council, before we go forward into this holiest of seasons, let us take a moment of silence in memory of Bert Delugoff, Bob Weiner, and the many, many victims of the opiate crisis, as well as of human trafficking, and of the 324 victims of homicide this year in Baltimore City. May the new year be a brighter one for all of us, one of peace and an end to this violence.
Thank you. There be no more business. This concludes the 24th meeting of the second term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.